Good afternoon. We're gathered here for the purpose of a workshop on RSM Statement of Work, Part Two, which is scheduled for 60 minutes and our review of the agenda for September 8th, 2020 Regular Meeting, which is also scheduled for 60 minutes. At this time, I will turn it over to Attorney Bruno for the RSM Statement of Work.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that the Statement of Work is going to be provided on Tuesday at the briefing, we really don't have anything else to report at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll have that information on Tuesday, and you did say that earlier. Okay, so we can move right on then to our review of the September 8th regular agenda. Dr. Atkins.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just start to go through the questions. The first question is consent, IMG, Human Resources. The question is relative to a resignation on the board agenda, and the question is, will replacement for this executive director position be the Fine Arts Coordinator as per the new job description? The response to that is yes. And Dr. Spiro, if you could provide a little bit more in terms of how you're going to go about filling that position?
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
We have recently completed a resume rubric for the coordinator of the arts position, so everybody that applied for the arts position goes through a resume rubric to narrow down our candidates to those individuals that will be interviewed. Interviews are being scheduled for next Wednesday, and so we'll have our interview process and then supply name to the board for a recommendation.
Yeah, but that was my question, and so that particular position is no longer going to exist as a director, an executive director. That's gone, and it's coordinator. What kind of reduction of duties? I mean, that's a huge change from an executive director position to a coordinator position. What brought you to the thought that, you know, hey, I'm always happy to save money, that it could be served by a coordinator, and what kind of difference in duties will there be, if any?
Would you like me to?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can, I'll start with a little bit of it, and then you fill in.
That's fine.
So if I had my druthers about it, and I think Dr. Santini would feel the same way, we would move forward probably first. We would love to be, have two actual coordinator positions to do the duties of one executive director, okay? Because you have, you have the performing arts and you have the visual arts, and so there's a different level of expertise. So long-term vision would, to have a coordinator that would actually operate within those two realms. For the short term, in this budget year, we are looking to, looking for ways to reduce costs, so we are doing that. And the question about what about duties? Fortunately, we do have Lee Byer on hand who's still working with us, who can pick up, or, you know, really currently does a yeoman's job already in that position. We do believe between the coordinator and between Lee Byer and what she does, and with what support that Dr. Spiro can provide with his division, that we can support the needs of the art, at least in the short term, until we come to a little bit better place in terms of our budget. And then I would love to be recommending two coordinators, honestly.
So you know how I'm obsessed with the whole plan, the organizational plan? You know, there's several different positions that have changed and moved to one department or another. Can we look forward to sometime in the near future seeing updated plans, you know, for instance, like sending McClung move same position but into those kinds of things? I think it's, I know it's less confusing for me, and I'm sure the public as well, so...
Actually, it's fairly timely. You know, we've got the final budget that we are, you know, that we're approving this month, that have approved this month, and those are all the positions that we have changed for this coming year. So to come out with that, this would be a good time to do that.
Great, thank you.
So we'll make sure that happens.
That's what I was going to say, that we generally, once the final budget is approved, then that's when the new org chart is developed and put out and published.
Okay, great.
Okay, and since Dr. Pruitt is here, we do have the next question, as approval to revise and adopt job descriptions as part of the FY '21 budget. So really, the question was learning and leadership job description. Is this a new position? And qualification questions.
Yeah, I'm going to let Ms. Harrell, it's in her area, and let her go ahead and speak to that, and then answer any additional questions.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was waiting for a question. Okay, I apologize. I apologize.
Learning and leadership job description and new position, yes, and qualification for that position.
Yes, okay. This senior position, we're asking for the supplement, and what we have now is we have a tiered support that we provide from professional development. And so the way that works right now, we have peer collaborative teachers, of course, out in the schools that provide professional development and support to teachers. And then from the district level, we have learning and leadership teachers that go out and they support in schools as well. So they do half-part-time teaching, and then they provide part-time support to the PCTs wherever we have those. Right now, in, I believe it's 30 of our Title One schools. The position that we're looking for now would be an additional layer, a supplement, not another position. It would be a supplement that we would pay to our leading and learning, our LLTs, can I just say that, our LLTs that would go out and provide even more intensive assistance in our most needy schools. And I can give you an example. We did a little bit of this work last year at Manatee Elementary. So what we did is we went in and we actually studied, if you will, the problems that they were having in terms of their new teachers and getting that instruction to get going. So we took a team in, literally, we watched what they were doing, we came back out, we developed professional development, we walked right back into the school, and our people took over and they taught. And then the teachers were able to step back, and then we walked back in to say, okay, did you see what, how that worked? And then we came back, did a little more professional development, went back in and taught. So we're just asking for another bit, another layer, if you will, of support for the schools, and it would be in our most neediest schools. Tier three schools is where we see that working the best.
So, okay, so it would be, learning and leadership teacher already exists.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is just an addition, so...
A supplement, yes, ma'am.
And to be, okay, and I didn't look up, I didn't recognize the title. To be a learning and leadership teacher, what are the qualifications? Just a bachelor's degree?
Yes, and they had to have the effective or highly effective evaluations. To be an LLT, just that position itself, you had to have served as a PCT in some role in a school, providing professional development, and you also had to be in the career bridge.
Okay, and remind me what the career bridge entails.
Okay.
We hadn't talked about that, I think, in a long time.
Okay, so if you want to be in the career bridge, we send out an email. You have to have the recommendation and support of your principal. Once that's like the first step, then they have to submit a video of themselves teaching and a reflection of, you know, why was that a good strategy, that type of thing. We then review all of those tapes down here, those teaching strategies to say, yes, it's, it would be the high level that we would expect for somebody that would be going into schools and providing supports. And then they have to go through an interview process with people that are currently in the career bridge or on those interview panels, assistant principals may serve. And then based on all of that, if they meet the qualifications, then they're in the career bridge, which makes them eligible to apply for any PCT position in the district. So we've kind of done a pre-vetting, if you will, and we know the caliber of teacher that they are. So when I say you can go to Manatee Elementary and serve as the PCT, we know there's a certain level that the principal should expect for performance.
Okay, and clinical educator and that sort of thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just, it seems to me, three years isn't really that much to become, I guess it says three years in that position. Okay, so that clarifies it.
Yes.
A little bit.
Yes.
But, so they're not transitioning to administrative from this?
No.
It's to elevate opportunities, excuse me, within teaching.
Within the teaching ranks, yes.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. Wanted to, that's what I wanted clarification on. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so then my question would be, who evaluates the effectiveness of these people that we continue to provide supplements for, give opportunity, you know, different levels of opportunity? Who? Is it the principal? Is it your department? What is the process? How data dense is it?
So are you talking about PCTs or are you talking about LLTs?
Doesn't matter. I mean...
Okay, so the PCTs, because they're assigned to a school and they're hired by the principal, the evaluation is done by the principal. However, we help them develop their goals, and it's based on the performance of the school. We use all of the data to make those decisions, right? So, because there is an expectation that there's going to be an improvement in performance, which is like the example I gave you at Manatee. They were struggling, and as soon as we went in and we did those micro PDs, and we didn't just say, oh, here it is, do it, we modeled it. We did more PD, we came back in it. And it's the same thing for the LLTs. They also have performance measures that they're expected. So the schools that they're working with, there's an expectation that there will be an improvement in performance as well for those schools. So it's all tied to the goals based on the data of the school that they're supporting. If I'm, does that make sense?
No, it makes pretty much sense, but that raised another question. So who's paying? Whose budget does this come out of?
The LLTs currently are funded through Title II.
Okay, all right. So a principal is making a choice between various resources for their school. No?
No, PCTs are funded out of Title I.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, there's two different things. Yes, PCTs are funded through Title I.
Okay. So again, and the principal still has discretion with respect to Title I funds?
Correct. So they may choose not to, there are some schools that choose not to have a PCT at their school. That is their decision.
Okay, that's sort of what I was getting to. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, thank you for that last clarification. How are you, by the way? Yeah, that was my question, too. If administrators at Tier One, at Title One schools and Tier Three schools have the discretion, or do they feel they must have a certain number of LLTs and PCTs and all of that?
That is absolutely up to their discretion, whether they want to have a PCT or not. And the LLTs, we put, they have like a dual purpose, so they're providing support that way, but when we, because I only have seven of them. And so they're, the decision about where they're going and giving their major support is based on the number of new teachers that they have in that building, because they require the greatest amount of support. And I'll be honest, typically those end up being in the East Zone, because they usually have the greatest turnover of teachers. And how awesome is that I can walk in with a group of fantastic teachers that can say right away, hey, we're going to go, when we went to Manny, we went to every first grade classroom at the same time, right? So that everybody had the same opening, the same bell ringer, if you will. So that's, that's the beauty, I think, of this program.
How, I mean, have you seen, I'm kind of piggybacking off of Ms. Morgan with the results and the data piece, because we started out originally with just, you know, in-house, basically, teacher leaders.
Yes.
The grant went away, now we're still, we're paying that. The fact that those teachers are teaching classes helps, because that lowers the number of teachers that we need, so that's a positive thing. I just, especially in these times where the teaching stuff is kind of, you know, we're just kind of all over the board with that. And it's my understanding that some of the LLTs are now teaching more classes?
The PCTs.
The PCT.
The PCTs currently, because as we all know, this is a new day, and we all have to be out there supporting in whatever way is necessary. And our hope is, is once we get to a place where all the classes are just exactly the way they need to be in the schedule, that the PCTs will come right back out and go back into teaching half-time and supporting half-time. I do want to add one thing, Ms. Gittens, that might clarify something about the LLTs. It's so confusing, I know, with the initials, but the LLTs that are working, I do want you to know, like, when we have new teacher orientation, so just that, for example, they lead all of the PD that's going to be happening. So we have those simply great beginning classes, they do all of that. We had new-to-teaching academy teachers, right? So they're out there supporting people who've never taught in a classroom before. We were just actually talking about that on a Zoom call today. Reach out, ask them, what do they need? They actually were out helping some teachers, you know, put their bulletin boards together, because they got to that point of, okay, let's go, let me help you, what do you need? And so they provide the LLT support in a, they have a little broader reach, I guess, if you will, because they see more teachers.
And those are the ones that are from you and the district going on?
Correct. Those are my seven people.
Okay, that's where it's confusing, because it was...
No, it's confusing, I apologize.
It was teacher leaders before in the schools.
That's right, yes.
And the L was there, and now the L's not there anymore.
And the L's in two places, I get it.
So here's what would help me, and I know we haven't finalized org charts, but some basic thing to show, this is who this person is, and they report here.
This is who we are, okay.
And this one is here, and they do this.
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
I guess because I'm a visual.
Just something that might help, if you, if you kind of think about it this way, think about our school resource officers, okay? Our school resource officers are deployed at every school, and they work with the school principal. However, you know, there is a command structure to the school resource officers, which is housed down in this office, you know, Commander Miller and his team. And that provides a consistency of services across all of our schools from a district perspective. And so this is a very similar type of concept of what you see with our school resource officers.
And I get that. I think it's the change in the L's and the P's and the Q's and the R's and the Y's.
Yes, and the whatevers, right.
Yeah. So my other question real quickly is, the supplement then is for whom? The LLT or the...
It would not be for every LLT, it would be seniored, so the people that could do the very thing I'm talking about. Because right now, as you can imagine, with thousands of teachers in a hundred schools, if we had the specific need of what we're talking about at Manatee, this person would be able to, we would, they would take their, perhaps after school or before school, they would go into that building, and they've got a level of expertise that they can help that principal figure out, hey, what do I need to do next? Let's look at your data together. Let's, it's for that.
Okay, and that's the person then coming from the district?
Correct.
That would go out and do that.
And they would be above and beyond the work they're currently doing. It would add one more layer, though, support, we believe, for teachers.
Well, are they, are they salaried or are they hourly?
Who? The LLTs? They're teachers, they're instructional. Sorry.
It's kind of like if we'd have a department head supplement, because you're doing duties that are above and beyond your regular job description, or a team leader, or this would be a supplement, just like that.
And I, and I get the supplement piece. I guess the confusing part is that, you know, their job at the district is to go out and do this. And we're saying now, if they do a little more of this that they were sent out to do, they get a supplement for it. And how is that rated?
It's not really more of it, it's a higher level of it. It's a more in-depth, focused look that wouldn't be part of what they're doing in their day-to-day support.
And will all of them on that team have the opportunity to do that, or how will they be selected? That you'll get a supplement and you won't?
We'll, we would go definitely through a vetting process. In other words, looking at some of the professional development that they have, that they have developed and how that's been deployed, because as you know, everybody has a different strength for that. So we would consider it, we would consider all of those factors, and we would just, we would make that determination myself and Helen, and, well, Suzette's always part of our team, so Suzette would be on there as well as we're talking that through.
Okay, and I thank you so much for answering the questions. I, like I said, I appreciate... I, like I said, I appreciate something visual.
I'm very visual, I understand.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
Oh, I'm sorry.
She probably has a question for them, mine is off topic.
Oh, yours is off topic?
Off topic, but on the same agenda item.
Okay, then we'll allow it, okay. Ms. Vaughn? Oh, don't the peer collaborative teachers already get a higher salary than?
They receive a supplement.
Okay, how much is the supplement that the peer collaboratives make?
It's 10,123 or, yes, provided they meet all of the.
They would get their regular step.
Correct, that's correct.
And then they get one supplement for that.
Correct.
And then if they're selected as a senior, then?
No, that's a different.
Sorry, different, yeah, two different groups. I'm sorry, PCTs.
Yeah, all the acronyms, okay. And so you said that, and I was, when I was going through the transfers, change of assignment, that sort of thing, I saw a lot of, you know, including literacy coaches and.
They're different, correct.
And all the, switching to teacher, did we have, I'm not going to ask for the exact number, but I'm guessing we had to really go in deep to the people that are in the schools and they're either doing, now, literacy coach wouldn't have any regular classes, right?
They might, my understanding of that position, that was vetted through academic services, not through professional development. But the literacy coaches were to provide support for those K1 and 2 classroom teachers and to make sure that those students were getting the help they needed in terms of how they become the best readers and.
How does that differ from the reading coach? Or do we not have reading coaches anymore, or is it all literacy?
Some schools also have reading coaches, they're different, because literacy coach is K1 and 2 and the reading coach could be potentially K through 5, depending on how.
So they don't, they don't have support in high schools anymore?
Oh, that's true, I'm sorry, that's true. Yes, high schools, I'm still thinking elementary, yes, but they could go all the way through 12th grade.
Yeah, because I know they were reading when I was teaching, it's been a few years now, but they had the reading coaches as well. And I'll be brutally honest here, I think we have a little bit too much scaffolding on this. We want our newbies to be successful, we want anybody who's struggling to be successful. But there are other avenues and from personal experience and from talking, and of course, this is a high school level, but there are a lot of high school students that are very low and need a lot of help. A lot of them really weren't doing, and they were receiving more money, the heavy lifting that the teachers were doing. Because if they don't have their own assigned class, they don't have the grading and some of that. And another thing that I was thinking about is, when you have somebody who is, after a while, in professional development and doesn't have his or her own classes, it's like the scientist who has no lab. Because when you write, and I did a lot of curriculum writing in my day back in Texas, when you have your own class, you know what works and what doesn't.
And that's why for LLTs, 20% of their time, they're required to co-teach or mentor, they're still teaching, they're still, I was actually just sending out emails today.
But that's not their, that's not their class alone, they're co-teaching.
Co-teaching with a new teacher.
So you have two teachers in one classroom, so you're really paying double for that class.
Right, so, but also, let me, two things I want to say, because Lynn won't say it. One is, I promise you, the oversight that is done by her and Dr. Martin, that there is none of what you, because I know what you're saying, and that is, I assure you, that's not even possible under the structure that they have and the accountability that they have.
And as I said, it's been a few years.
Right, and I will say to you that this structure has continued to evolve based specifically on the data of that Black Belt project we did a couple of years ago, if you'll recall, where we looked at, why do teachers leave the district? And it's because they don't have the support that they need. So our structures have really been focused as countermeasures to those issues. And I know to Ms. Gittens' point about openings, the all, you know, the same rule in place right now, that you need to fill your core academic before you fill, like, you don't fill a reading coach if you have a language arts position that's open, right? Or vice versa. So that those core, the in-class positions are the priority across the board. Good news is, knock on wood, and I'm putting aside changes that are going to happen, you know, relative to student assignment over the next two weeks, but relative to just openings, we really are within five to eight positions of where we were this time last year, so.
That's good to know.
So I, you know, like I said, knock on wood, I mean, there, I'm going to just say upfront, you know, with the move that parents are making, we're still going to see some more shifting of teachers to different locations because we have to put the teachers where the students end up.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, next.
Kathleen continues to have a question for them.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's not really questions to comment, I mean, I sort of feel like we've got the cart before the horse here, that really what we're talking about is an action plan to develop a particular need in schools and we're filling, we're talking about creating the position before we've talked about what the plan is. I think there's certainly, I'm not a teacher, so I'm not familiar with a lot of this stuff. So you're asking us to approve something that makes perfect sense to you, but I have no clue what the context is.
So let me, okay, I appreciate that. So let me say it this way, this is the same time every year that Ms. Harrell and Dr. Martin and Ms. Rivera really start to look at, and again, we're gonna, it's going to be delayed a little bit, because we have to see where do all those new teachers actually end up in a couple of weeks. Then we'll start to develop those plans, what they learned from last year, because remember, we do the whole, you know, continuous improvement cycle, was that we did have, there was a differentiation relative to the LLTs and some of the work and relative finding that some of them were working above and beyond their job description. Okay, so how do you address that? You see if we can come up with a supplement that would address what we knew the need was last year, right? And so this is actually a result of examining our process, looking at our data, seeing, you know, what worked, what didn't work. And this request for this supplemental job description is so that when they go to set their plans in a couple of weeks and figure out where the LLTs, is there the need for this additional duty? But if we don't have the job description, then we can't even consider it. So the point is, this job description is coming forward as a requested supplement because of lessons learned from last year and the year before.
I guess what I'm saying, I'm still concerned that we're not briefed before we're asked to make a judgment. I mean, sometimes we're asked to approve job descriptions for positions that we're not filling, just because we're going through this whole process of updating all of our job descriptions. That I get, but I said enough, I'll let others speak.
Okay. Okay, I think.
Yeah, no, I have to say too, I agree with that. And I still, I hear you about that they can take it out of their funds, Title I and the Tier 3 schools and all that. I'm just, I just have a bit of angst in them thinking that you've got these positions and that they have to use them, so.
Well, no, this wouldn't, this is ours, this is us, professional development. The schools don't, wouldn't make any decision on that, that would come from us determining where the support is needed for the new teachers. The schools aren't, they.
And still, the pay, the salaries for this group you're talking about?
Comes out of professional development Title II funds, which is managed by us, not by the schools.
Okay, I'll stop.
Mrs. Javonelli, did you have something pertinent to this?
Well, actually, it was something that Dr. Pruitt mentioned. So I know you're talking about shift, there are a lot of shifting and so forth. So when do we stop shifting? I mean, are we gonna, is that going to be this year? I mean, you know, we're, teachers are going to have to go where the students are, like you said, you know what I mean?
Right, I mean, so right now, we're operating under the premise that September 11th is that date. So that'll be the, that'll be that first date. But we are, Dr. Spiro and I and teams, we meet, we're meeting, we discuss this daily. And then we'll, next Tuesday, we're going to look at what, you know, do we need to do some changes immediately or do we need to wait another week until after September 11th? The next shift, in my opinion, will occur after the first nine weeks, when parents can again make decisions about changing. Then again, at the semester, when the parents who are at Lee Virtual can make those decisions about going back to brick and mortar, which we know a lot is going to depend on the perception of the community relative to where we are with COVID and how comfortable people feel. And so we, in my opinion, this year will be different than any other year relative to teacher movement and, you know, that's just kind of the state of where we are right now.
Thank you, yeah, and I just wanted to, because people are not understanding that. I mean, I'm talking, not only parents, but even teachers are not quite, it's, I guess it's more frustrating, especially for the teachers in the, that have the classroom and it's constantly changing and so forth.
Yep, and, yes, and I, you know, and it is always my hope and desire, you know, as I talked about something earlier today, it's my hope and desire that our administrators have the, you know, we talk about that grace and compassion, to be able to have those crucial conversations with these staff, so they understand that we support you, we care about you, and it's not just a, here's an email or, you know what I mean? Like, we really hope that our administrators take into account the stress that that caused. It'd be just like if someone told any of us, oh, by the way, tomorrow you're going to go work over here instead. I mean, that's, it's a concern.
Yeah, I mean.
Which we've had to do in the past, I mean.
And I understand that, exactly. I actually received a call recently where they had a class and then they were at one school and then that was, that changed over, literally overnight, and they were sent to another school. Now it's like a temporary position and they had a full, they don't know where they're going to be in six to eight weeks, they don't know when the teacher's going to come back. So I mean, whose responsibility is to tell that person that's in this school that she knows no one and like, so, but she's really, honestly, she's wanting to quit and go back to subbing where she can pick where she's going to be working.
I would say, in that particular case, I would ask that you advise that person to reach out to either me or Ms. Harrell, because we would have hoped that there wouldn't be that feeling at this point, either based on the sending principal or the receiving principal. But again, it's the first week of school, every, you know, so I would say, definitely direct them our way and we'll do whatever we can to make them feel more comfortable.
Okay, great.
Just, this is, this is the time that we live in and unfortunately, and what we are trying to do, what they are feverishly trying to do, is, you know, the first thing is try to meet the needs of the students, right? You know, I mean, and that's really what we're trying to do here. And I think, you know, given the fact that we have so, the number of students that we have, right? I mean, we're dealing within the non-charter district of well over 80,000 kids that are trying to be moved around and trying to staff appropriately. So I do appreciate the patience that you all are having, I appreciate the patience of our teachers and our community, but, you know, we just feel that we need to give our parents some flexibility here so that their children are comfortable in the instructional model that they've selected. And that comfort level will probably change. I mean, you know, depending on, you know, we've seen the migration from the Lee Virtual School take place because parents want more structure. You've seen some want to come back to face-to-face when they start to feel more comfortable that the protocols are working, which, you know, and we've seen some cases with, by the way, that I'll report a little bit on, where our protocols really help save the day in terms of contact tracing, you know, in terms of keeping our kids safe. So once parents understand that, I think you will have more kids that will want to come back. So, you know, I know you know that and so part of this is just for kind of the viewing public, but I just appreciate everybody's patience. I do think what we're doing as a school district is in the best interest of kids and so.
Thank you, and really, I'm just bringing it up too, so that, just to have patience. Everyone just needs to have patience, including the teachers and the parents and I think it'll work itself out, you know, but I just.
Yeah, but if anybody feels that they don't have somebody to turn to, or they, and even if they just want to vent, please direct them our way, because we, you know, it is our overriding goal to retain all of our teachers. So we want to do whatever we can to help with that.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, okay. So now, Ms. Jordan?
Okay, thank you. I just want to piggyback real quick off of what Ms. Javonelli just said about the shifting of teachers. And this is only because when, and this is my grandson, so it's, I know this was just happened, had a teacher virtual and yesterday went online and that teacher disappeared because the teacher supposedly had gone back to the brick and mortar school because she didn't want to be at the virtual, so he had no teacher. And then, that happened to both of them, two of them, so two different grades. So in retrospect, what happens to those children who, the teacher just disappeared on them and who is going to be there to give them their lessons?
Well, I will tell you that, like I said, daily, we're reviewing what the openings are, and there are openings at Lee Virtual School based on, you know, the numbers today, that may not be the case on Monday, or Tuesday, rather, but, and we, literally, it's a day-by-day thing. And what could have happened in those cases was either A, there was some confusion about which teachers were actually going to Lee Virtual and there was some disconnect there for a couple of days, so that potentially could have been the reason. Or the other reason is, what we really tried to do was align the schools that lost the students to Lee Virtual, to that's where those teachers, we tried to match that up the best that we could, so that if school A had 100 students at Lee Virtual, then we would want to take that, that same proportion of teachers to go to Lee Virtual. But maybe there wasn't, there weren't people there that had a high risk or that wanted to go to Lee Virtual. So it really has been trying to balance the needs of the employees with the needs of the students. I just want to tell you, it's been a monumental, I mean, it would have been much easier to say, all right, you know, employees, you don't get a say, you go, and that's what happened in our sister districts, this, employees didn't get a choice. They were told, you're doing this, you're doing this, you're doing this. What we wanted to do, and that, you know, interest base and employ your attention, is to say, we want to hear you, employees, and what you, what issues you have and what concerns you have, and we want to try to match that up with where the kids are. So that's all I can tell you about.
I appreciate that, and I do get that, so it just is, that has to be corrected.
And we're looking at every opening, you know, it's a challenge.
Okay, I'm going to entertain Ms. Patrica.
Well, mine's on a different, this is a subject that's still on, I don't want to interrupt it.
Oh, okay, she's still off topic. Okay, then, Mrs. Morgan, then Ms. Gittens?
This is off topic.
Oh, okay.
We're doing the agenda. This is the kind of conversation we've talked about having at the end of the meeting, where we can discuss some of the things that concern us. This has, I mean, I appreciate the conversation, but I don't think, I think we need to stick to business and work through the agenda and then come back and converse about those things that we feel the need to talk about, so.
So your point of order is well taken, so we will go ahead and move on and then we'll.
Mine is directly, just a quick thing, just a statement to them, and I totally agree with you that we've gone off, but the statement was made that we have until September 11th. Several parents have received notification that they only have until September 4th to make their decision. So some, I'm just saying, for whomever, there are some, and you don't have to come up, I'm just putting this out there, that there are some administrations in some schools that have sent out notification that the parents have until tomorrow to make their decisions. And, you know, I tried to correct and say, no, it's the 11th, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that to our attention. But I could tell you, the principals were provided in writing and was based around collective input of principals and Mr. Schilling that asked for that date. And so if principals are giving that misinformation, I will correct that once I go back and sit down. So that's the kind of information that we need as we're in this joint venture together, so thank you.
Right, they're probably just trying to get a jump on it, so.
And the only other thing I would want to say is, I mean, we would like nothing more than to provide whatever you think would be needed, Ms. Morgan, Ms. Gittens, relative to that request for that supplemental job description. I don't know of another way to do it. So if you can provide me, or Dr. Atkins? I don't know of another way to do it, so if you can provide me, or Dr. Atkins, the guidance on that, I, I would greatly appreciate that, because again, I, I don't know.
Thank you. And, and just before we go, I'm going to entertain Ms. Patrica, because she's been waiting patiently for her off-topic topic.
It's not for you guys, it's just a comment on the head's, head esports coach and assistant esports coach. I cannot believe I'm going to approve that tomorrow night, because to me, esports are not a sport, they're a game. That being said, my thinking on this has developed and changed over the past year, thanks to Mr. Fundaberk over at Dunbar High School, and my understanding of the growing number of college scholarships that are being issued and offered to students for this thing that I don't consider to be a sport. It's, it's hard, it's hard for me to approve it, because it's like, in my gut, if it's not, you know, if it doesn't require, I think I said this at this table before, I used to not think golf was a sport, because you don't, you know, necessarily sweat or breathe hard or anything. So, so it's hard, but I think we're doing the right thing for kids. That's my point in bringing it up, is sometimes we have to make decisions that don't sit well with us, but because they're in the best interest of kids, we do them. And I think Mr. Fun is going to be pretty excited, that maybe he will be paid for the work he does now, so. So that, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, ladies, we appreciate it. Dr. Atkins, moving on to operations.
Okay, the next, the next item that had questions was I-2 approval to renew the bid, gate and fencing installation repairs. I think Dr. Savage is going to come and address this. One of the questions was, do we have the in-house ability to perform at least some of these functions? The answer to that would be yes, in, in the case of small repairs and so forth, that we can do that. I think in the case of a large installation, if you think about like the fencing down, if you've been to Beneath the Springs Elementary, for example, you know, those type of applications, as large scale, we do not have that capability in-house. And then, I do know that it was a question about the amount in the prior year, so, Dr. Savage?
Yes, good afternoon. Yeah, since the beginning date of this annual bid, which started on November 1st to 2019, we've spent $332,000. And that expenditure history is consistent with prior years. As Dr. Atkins kind of alluded to, we do not have any fencing specialists or fencing technicians on staff, but we do utilize our utility workers to perform minor repairs that are, fall within their authorized job description to do so. I, I think I'm on the next question, if you want me to-
Okay. Any follow-up with that question?
I'll get my notes.
All right.
See any hands?
All right, next is approval of the expenditure for the ITN, emergency debris monitoring and removal disposal, and provide the bids and information, nothing was provided.
This ITN is used by the Maintenance Services Department for an emergency debris monitoring, removal, and disposal in the event of a state of emergency that it's declared. There were no state of emergencies declared since October 23rd, 2019, that required use of these services. So like, example, like a hurricane would require that type of, of effort.
We did, we did have to utilize those type of services during Irma, as I recall. Okay? All right, next is approval to expenditure for the, for HVAC repair services. Does this include labor and materials? How many employees and list of names of employees? And what has been paid to each of the vendors to date?
Yes, just want to clarify on this particular expenditure increase that is specific just to the fogging piece. So I just wanted to clarify that, but as far as the general HVAC bid, it does include labor and materials. For our fogging, we, we procured the supply of the fogging agent. So that, that's not necessarily, just want to clarify that within this particular piece. As far as the employee counts, employee rosters, that's not information that Maintenance maintains. You know, Business Services also has said they, they would be able to provide vendor expenditure summaries for this base as well.
Ms. Javon Ellie?
So we don't know how many employees they have. We have to make sure that the employees are-
Talking like the contractor badging and whatnot?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so for tho, for those, they go through, that happens through our HR division. They do have like approved contractors and so forth, but that's strictly for that vendor piece for screening for employees.
Right, so we have no idea how many, I'm just curious how many number of employees, I mean, I just think this is quite the undertaking, and so I'm just wanting to make sure that, I mean, because it's also very expensive, and that's all for labor, I mean, that's like, very expensive.
The expense, I, I just make sure I want to answer the question that I, that I'm, which is just the employee rosters, employee counts. We don't, we don't keep that information on files. Is, is there a interest, should we reach out to all of our vendors and ask for?
No, just these particular, because I mean, they could be fogging daily. So, you know, that's, I just, I'm going to make sure they have enough staff to do that. How do we know?
Well, that's from, I, I think I understand the question. So basically, you just want to make sure that they have the capacity to deliver on what we're asking them to do?
Yeah.
Well, certainly, that's, that's part of their obligation, is, as a business, to make sure that they have the bandwidth to make good on what they're scheduled to do. And we, we're happy to try to put together more information that's responsive to this.
One of the things I know that our, literally, this has been a, a multi-divisional effort to try to, try to work within our existing contracts and then look forward into the future, because this may go on for a while. But to put together a plan that would allow us to do a regular fogging effort in a manner that, where we would have the capacity to, to, to be able to accomplish this across the whole district with every one of our buildings. So I know they've been working on a team effort, and I don't know if, you know, if, I know Dr. Desmore has just walked in, she wants to add to that, but, but that's one of the parts of this whole effort has been analyzing the capacity of our existing contracts to be able to do this work. And, and I will be candid, it has been a challenge, because they've been, you know, kind of discussing four, five different vendors and the capability to do that. And I think we've got a short-term plan, and we're working on a longer-term solution because of the very issue that you raised, capacity.
This topic really leads into the next question as well, because of either the two areas we've asked for increased expenditure, but there was a little bit more questions around this area, so tried to put together some thinking around this to try to respond to the, the kind of the gamut of that. And it really kind of dovetails with what Dr. Atkins had said, which is, you know, the first thing I want to reiterate is that, you know, as it pertains to the fogging, I think it was Ms. Vaughn's question, you know, it's just citing a huge amount of money, not really a ton of detail. What's the science say on this? You know, what's the fogging, tire buildings? There's just a lot of concern around this, and I don't want to try to sell you on anything, because from our perspective, this is absolutely a topic that we want you to know the gravity that we're engaging with on this. We are in a very, you know, I, I would just say certainly that this is not an easy decision for any of us, at our level or yours, certainly. And there are so many layers of protective measures that we already have in place out in our schools. But the fogging has served as our most aggressive option in our COVID-positive situations. And even our understanding as a society of the virus itself has really evolved greatly over time. And so our mitigation efforts have to evolve with that. So what we do know is that when employees have found out that COVID has been confirmed in their building, families know that it's happened in their building, that that is very scary and frightening for them. And so our most aggressive response, this fogging, has been that top level of response that we can offer. And so it, it does provide just a different level of assurance to folks because of the nature of what it is. And so when we asked, just to give you an example, when we asked our pediatric group of advisors, so actual health experts, and asked them, told them, we went through our different list, when we got to the fogging, the response back was, wow, that's so great, could you do that every night? And that's what the, the medical doctor said to us. And I just, we didn't, we didn't say anything immediately, because the idea then, it's saying, well, so you're saying if we did this more often, it would make us safer. And so that's the challenge of this environment, the balancing act, of trying to make all the different things we can do to make people as safe as possible, but knowing that, can you ever do enough to feel truly? And knowing that these valuable dollars that we have, being spent in this manner, are money that we can't spend in other ways. And so we, we carry a heavy burden with this. And I want you to feel that it's, it's absolutely your place to question it, to push on it. And so I just want to make sure you understand what it is. And the basic piece of it is just that the fogging is, kind of related to me through Maintenance, is it's atomizing the disinfectant solution that's currently being applied. The fogger creates fine particles, the disinfectant that becomes suspended in the air, and also land on surfaces that normal cleaning would not reach. It's effectively disinfecting areas in the building during this process that normal spray and white procedures can't get along with areas that cannot be over-wetted. The disinfectant remains on the hard surfaces and dries, creating a longer kill time to combat the additional bacteria and virus as well. The disinfectant agent used is completely safe and EPA-approved to that effect. And then, the last piece I want to say, it just really cuts to what Dr. Atkins said, is that we are continuing to try and find the most cost-effective ways to enhance our safety, but the last thing we want to do is expend them in a low return on investment effort. So we already have some, some things underway to try to broaden our piece, because we just don't know how long this will go on, and, and we just, we recognize the significant cost. But we're trying to assure our students, staff, and families that we're erring on the side, right now, of being overly proactive and not putting a price tag on safety in any way. And that is why we're doing this now. Now, as far as this increase is concerned, that does not mean that we anticipate that we will have to exercise that expenditure, that full gamut of that piece. But we are working on several things, and I know Dr. Desmore can speak to some of those as well, and I know there's more questions associated to this, but I wanted to give you that piece as that initial response. Did you want to add?
No, it was, can I, it was my question, and I don't feel like it was adequately answered for what I, for my intent, because first of all, thank you for the definition, but that's easy to find online. One of the things I was questioning is, and, and you cite it, that some pediatricians say, that's great dude every night, because I've, I've looked at some things online, and some of them say that it should be preceded, this is why I'm asking you what you have found in your research, preceded with wipe-downs. The other thing is, many of our schools are not just one building. And so when I initially asked for the costs, what I received, and I don't have the figures in front of me, but it was something in the vicinity of like 5,000 for elementaries, and, you know, it was more for high schools, that sort of thing. But frankly, that doesn't make sense to me, because we have schools of, you know, even with our high school, look at Lehigh Senior, the size of Lehigh Senior, they're going to do that for the same cost as, I don't know, Dunbar or a smaller school. That, that doesn't make sense. And when you have schools that, for instance, schools like Cypress, where the, where the theater is totally separate, and nobody who's been infected has even been in the theater, or, you know, why would you pay to do that? Why, do you understand what I'm saying? There's so many different buildings. Schools like Mariner, Astero, there's the whole courtyard, and, and, I mean, how, how could you give, isn't it by the square foot? Are those figures that you supplied averages? Or how, where did those figures come from? And I'm recalling, it is just the labor, and, and that's what we're voting on, right? The labor. We're not voting on what has already been purchased, the, the fogging agent, right?
That's right. It's the labor that's provided to, from the companies, yes.
Really, really, and I want the kids, and everybody, the staff and everybody, to be as safe as possible. But on the other hand, I, I think some of this sounds a little bit extreme when you look at the number of schools we have with separate buildings, some buildings that might not even be, what do we do with the portables? Do we go to each portable and do a mini-fogging?
Yeah.
So where did the, okay, so where did those numbers come from? How do you give a, a number like it's $5,500 per middle school, or, or whatever?
So let me provide some background to that, and then Mr. Savage may want to add to it. So, all, all great questions, so let me start from the beginning. I believe that the numbers that you received, or what the vendor has proposed at this time is a pricing structure per school, and I believe it was $3,400 for an elementary, $4,200 for a middle, and $5,000 for a high school. Which was, okay, which was supposed to present, as you said, an average cost by level based on the knowledge that the vendor had about each of our different facilities. So it's kind of an averaging of the differences that you see between schools at levels. Now, we are still in the process of, there are other places out there who may have a structure based on square footage, as you said, but based on the, the square footage of our facilities, if we were going to be doing all of our facilities every week, then this would be a better pricing model in the short term. However, we are still in conversation with the vendors to try to talk about, get some more breakdown in detail of how were these, you know, how were the numbers derived? What can we do to try to bring the cost down? Because we, you know, I understand what you're saying, that it is, it, it is at great cost. And so you have to determine, okay, what's the cost benefit of that? Which is why we're talking about a short versus a long-term plan. That shorter-term plan, so that we could stay on track with, you know, what the plan was for the weekly fogging, was to utilize our vendors, hopefully for a very short period of time, while we work on, number one, doing another bid to go specifically for this one service, to see whether there is some different results we can get from that. And then also potentially training our own employees so that we can do some response fogging with our own staff. So those are all the things that we're trying to put together as a large plan, short and long term.
Okay, and yet, sorry, but, and yet, when we asked for this at a prior meeting, somebody looked it up real fast and gave us very specific numbers.
Very specific numbers as to what?
As to the cost, and I think it was a little bit higher. I don't, in this notebook, I don't have it.
Right, well, and, you know, and that could very well be, so things have, we've been, you know, discussions have been ongoing or negotiations with our vendors, and so, you know, things are, are changing in various places by the day. So the latest information that you have with the 34, the 42, and the 5 at elementary, middle, high school, though, that is the latest information that we have from the vendor, but that may not be the final, because, you know, as I mentioned, we still have these conversations ongoing to find out how much can we fine-tune that, and how can we get down to the most economical answer for the school district? So it could very well have been different, you know, a month ago.
Is that all the vendors that are on the same price, or are we dealing with just one vendor?
Well, right now, conversation is with one, and then we'll resume with others after we complete with the one, in addition to other research that we have done in other counties and pricing structures that we have there, so we have something relevant to compare it to.
So which vendor is that, that we're currently talking with?
AMRC currently.
What is it?
AMRC currently.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Javon Ellie?
So I was also on that, so, okay, so then I have a couple of questions, because now it sounds like you're negotiating, so is, is that for a new contract, or is this, you're going to negotiate with, I thought we already have a contract with a scope of work? So, and, so, and I have several questions with that, like, if, if we're going to train our employees, don't they have to be certified in this air quality to be able to even do it? And so fog the rooms and stuff, so I, I want to make sure that the certification is admissible?
Let me answer the first question. So you're asking about the negotiation, is it for a new contract? It's negotiation under the same contract, so the existing contract that we have in place has a, has a price per hour for the services. But in the contract, the terms and conditions of the contract, the vendor has the right to come back for a price adjustment if they believe that there's something in market conditions or conditions of the service that they offered that are substantially different from what they were when the contract was first let. So under the, the clause of the price adjustment, is where the vendor has contacted us about the desire to negotiate a different cost structure for the services that we're asking, the scope of the services, or the, really the scale of the services that we're asking for now.
And then I'll let Dr. Savage speak to the next question about the certification.
Yeah, there, there are two certifications we identified, and we do have local folks who have the capabilities through their consulting level work to be able to train our staff, but that's, we're- but that's, we're just not at that point yet where we could give all that information because that's part of the plan of trying to figure out what we would have to do to build that up. And again, all those details, but definitely, you're absolutely right. You can't just give people foggers and let them go to work. It has to be qualified. That's part of the reason why we paid for these services is so that you had folks who already had all of that. They had their own equipment to do it, to be able to utilize these pieces, their own pre-PPE, things along those lines. So it is a very good question, but that's, that's one of the factors we're looking at.
So then this was questions for Dr. Desmore because it made me think about it. Would any FEMA or CARES money go towards any of those services that were needing additional? So that's, I'm just trying to understand all the increase, you know, so, and how that works.
So your question is what would, I think, what would the funding source of this be? So I'm glad you brought up FEMA because we were, you know, going to discuss this a little bit later because I know there was a couple of budget questions on there. But recently, as in, I think Monday, if I'm not mistaken, there was a memorandum that was released from FEMA that was clarifying or giving additional information about what it was that they would reimburse for COVID. There were specific things that they had on there and specific reasons of why they would reimburse for COVID. And it appears that the activities that a school district would be engaged in didn't fall under what their criteria was of what they were saying. So we already have, we've filed our FEMA claim, we have a sub grant agreement that actually has been approved by the Department of Emergency Management, and we've been assigned a contractor to work with in order to complete the process. We're not the only ones. There were a couple of hundreds of school districts across the nation that have filed claims as well. So his, his thought is that that memorandum that they, that they, that they released was not necessarily conclusive of that. So we're going to continue our process with the consultant, but there is a chance and an opportunity, or a chance that FEMA reimbursement may not come through for the things that we are doing as far as personal protective measures like this, right? Like the fogging of our class and cleaning of our classrooms. So if we had an opportunity for FEMA reimbursement, yes, we would put that in for FEMA reimbursement. But we are also, based on the memorandum that we got, in conversation about if we had to then rework the budget based on this new guidance that came out from FEMA and we end up not getting that, it is a very good possibility that CARES would be the next place where we would look for that.
Thank you. Just curious, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
Yeah, I just have one question, please. The fogging, you said it was one company, but I thought on 13th and 14th, it showed a money amount for both of those for fogging. Am I correct?
No, we don't want to confuse, yeah, that's all three indoor air quality are included in that piece and then one HVAC company. So there's four vendors that are listed there, though. What they, what she meant was the one, the one particular indoor air quality vendor that they were in clarifying of the price piece. They had basically triggered the, basically the price adjustment clause. And so that's, it was one particular vendor going through that process with. But all of those vendors, the four that are identified through this are the ones that are planned to be able to offer these services.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Atkins, is that it?
I believe that's it. I'm just asking board members, you know, review your questions that were submitted because, you know, as I'm looking at the questions, I think they were covered, but...
And I think I handed you an additional...
Yes, and I think the, well, the one question, E2, we can certainly address that one. That is, the document, as a part of it, on page six of the document number nine, there are some services that, there was a request about can they be provided in a digital environment? So Beth will answer that question. F2, I believe was answered, but I know that has to do with COVID expenses aren't explicitly detailed in the budget. So that was the question that was, can we be directed to that portion of the budget?
Well, no, not really, not in, not in the display in which you have it right now. Because what you have displayed is either a function look at the budget, what function it is, like instruction or just instructional support, so on and so forth, or an object view of the budget, that is, what is being purchased? Is it supplies? Is it purchased services? Is it that, you know? So with the view that you have, COVID expenditures are all over in each one of those things. So if there's a supplies category, there's going to be COVID expenses in that supplies category, but then there's also going to be a bunch of other stuff that is not related to COVID. So by looking at the display you have, you couldn't tell that, but we could get you some additional information so that you could see that.
Yeah, I would personally anyway, like to see the impact of COVID on our budget and kind of see that out, you know? And I did read the, I think we all got the FSBA update on FEMA.
Right.
Touched on that because that, and I know that we are applying or have already applied or whatever for FEMA.
Correct.
And if that does not come through as an expenditure that they pay, what is our Plan B?
Well, Plan B is to go through, we rework the numbers that we have in the budget in which we would be potentially utilizing some CARES Act funding and then potentially maybe taking other things that aren't those, you know, aren't as high priority out of the budget in order to accommodate these expenditures. So where you would see that, well, there's two things. What we could do is give you some additional information that's specifically related to, so in the budget, this is what we plan on right now. So of course, we have an overall, you know, an overall expenditure estimate that's in the budget right now, which is tantamount to, we have some of those set aside in reserves that we had talked about for, before. So about $13 million is what we set aside in the budget at the very, what we felt was the very high end for things that may come up during the year, so we felt like we would be solidly covered. So you have that in terms of what's budgeted. I think what you're asking is, so going forward, maybe showing us a report of what those expenditures actually, what the actual expenditures now are coming into.
Yes.
Right? So maybe like a monthly report of, so what, what has it been? What is it really? What's happening month by month as far as our COVID expenditure? So I think that would better get at what it is that you're asking as opposed to a different view budget because total, overall, we've given that number, but you're wanting the actual reporting along the way, I think, correct?
Right, because, I mean, we do our budget in, you know, the summer and then September 1st, normally we start our new budget, correct?
Well, the final budget is usually approved sometime around the beginning of September, yes. About September 8th, something like that, yeah.
Okay, so all of that pre-work was done.
Right.
Prior to August and kind of in tune with all what's happening with COVID. So it would just be, to me, clear to say, this is how we had to shift and this is how much because of COVID it has cost us this. We have received this in, you know, funding to help pay for it and this is what actually is coming out of our pocket.
So let's, so what we could do then is work on kind of like a monthly reporting for you that shows that information.
If it's not going to be, I mean, I don't want to put you through a whole lot of work. I mean, if it's something where you can click and say, you know, put this over here or extract.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think it's a good and necessary piece of information to provide, so I don't necessarily have, you know, an issue with that. And I think we're trying to, for the most part, segregate our expenses in such a way where it is easily identifiable for us what it is, so it's fine.
And then I think the thing that, that helps with is that next year, if we're not doing, you know, COVID or whatever else comes along, we at least have a snapshot of what our budget was and what our true budget is and what we spent regularly and normally on everything.
Gotcha. Yeah, so, so, yeah, we'll do that.
I appreciate that.
And then, but the second piece of that, your question was, okay, so what happens? Like, how are we going to redo the budget and how will we know? Two ways. One, you know, we'll come back with, you know, probably that, I think, is if the superintendent is amenable, that that's worth a briefing to tell you, you know, kind of what the changes were and what happened with it. But second of all, you would also see them then in the monthly budget amendment to the board. If we're going to make a budget amendment that would be moving, you know, one thing to another in its large dollar amounts, you would see them specifically called out in that monthly budget amendment. But we would have also, you know, spoken to you previously about it in a briefing because it's a pretty big deal.
And I, that would be very helpful because if you, you know, see the same list of numbers each month and then you're trying to extract, okay, let me compare what happened, what's different on this one and this one?
Right, well, and part of what helps with that, some of them, a lot of the things that happen on there are kind of like routine and mundane, you know, day-to-day things that every location, every school and department is doing on a daily basis. But when there are things that are large and are of note, in the narrative to that agenda item, you'll see them kind of noted and give a little background information as to what those are. And so you would definitely see that.
Okay, and the final thing I have is what's coming before us on Tuesday? Where are we in the process then of, is this the final approval of?
This is the final approval of the, of the budget, of the fiscal year budget 21. So that would be the final hearing, which is on the 8th. Any, any questions about that at all?
Well, no, and if I do, I'll call you.
Okay, okay, yeah, two, two hearings each year, one tentative in July and one final at the beginning of September, and this would be the final hearing.
And then the public one was?
They're both public. The July hearing is public and then this one is public as well. The first one in July is noticed in the paper, right? An advertisement that we have to take out in the news press. The second one, this one that's coming up next week, is noticed through the property appraisers mailing. So when people get notice of what their taxes might be, the date of the hearing is listed in there.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, the question that we had was related to, again, E2, which we're talking about mandated screenings and the question is, can they be provided in a digital environment?
The screenings cannot be provided in a digital environment. They're mandated by the state and this year they have adjusted the requirements and what's mandated to include only vision and hearing for this year. So we will be going into the schools, we'll have a reduced number of screening members to provide this service so that we have less people coming into the school. They all are school nurses who are our district employees that will be providing this service as they do every year. We will just be reducing our numbers of school nurses that need to come into the school in relation to the reduced number of students that are face to face.
And then we just had one last question that we're going to work on getting a response for, they're still gathering that information.
Was, may I ask, was that the last one I gave you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Desmore's can come up and address.
Is that the last question? Was it on Crowther? I have some information from, okay.
Okay, yeah.
So, did you want to repeat the question or?
No, go ahead.
So the question that we received was what contracts we have now with Crowther Roofing? And there are various companies that fall underneath the umbrella. So there's Crowther, there's Target, and there's CFS. So with Target Building, they have Target Builders, they have recently been awarded the re-roofing at Norfolk Myers High School, the re-roofing at Cypress Lake High School, and the HVAC renovation for Cape Elementary School. And then Crowther and CFS are both on our district contracts for gutters, fascia, soffit, and roof repair and replacement. So that is the work that each of them have at this time or have the ability to receive because for Crowther and CFS who are on those bids for those services, they would have the ability to receive those.
Ms. Atkins?
That was my question and the reason I posed it is tactfully considering their legal situations at this point. How will that affect us as?
Well, well, certainly would, would want to go and, you know, speak with our attorneys to determine what, if any, action would need to be taken, so, which we have not done yet with that recent information. So I would say we would do that and then, you know, advise the board on what potentially would be happening after that.
Yeah, and I was thinking more or less on the side of, we have this, these jobs that we have already allocated and they're on the schedule to be done. That, that's what I was looking at, not so much the contract part.
Right.
But how is that going to affect our ability to stay on target to get these jobs done if there is an interruption in service?
Right, and so I think we have to consider both things. First of all, what happens with the contract? Now, the contract already has clauses in there for cancellation due to an interruption of service that's longer than what the district agrees to. So there are various clauses in the contract that protect us and have us be able to move on in the event of an unexpected interruption that does, you know, that is no fault of our own. So all of those things are the things that we would consult with our legal team on and determine how best to move forward.
And is it a possibility then of the other companies, since it's kind of shared, to like spread it out amongst the other companies that have some of the contracts?
Not necess, well, for the ones that were specifically awarded to Target, the three that I mentioned, those would be, I believe, contracts that we specifically, we did an RFP for and they were specifically awarded those. Go ahead, Frederick, or you can come on up here. Mr. Ross, our procurement director, can come up and answer a little bit of that, but if they're specifically awarded, then we would have to do something else, but something under a continuing contract, we may have some option there, so.
And please make it clear, I am not talking about contracts. I'm just talking about the work getting done.
And just wanted to make it clear that these are three separate, totally separate companies and owned by separate individuals that have the same last name. So no, there would not be any mechanism for them to, you know, just move forward with that project under one of the other companies. They would need to, I guess we would need to reanalyze and see where we are and possibly issue another RFQ.
Thank you. That was all that I was asking, just making sure we're continuing with our work.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, could I ask a roof question that's a little different?
I believe so. Go ahead.
I'd like an update on Benita Elementary roofing situation. What was the, including, what was the verdict on the reason for the roof collapse? Are things like, are we collecting this via the, depending on what that verdict is? Whoever put the roof up, is there insurance covering it or are we having to file on ours? All those kinds of things. And I'm assuming there was a lot of internal damage in the school and was there structural damage in the interior of the building? So just a general update on everything having to do with Benita Elementary.
We just provided, I think, a written update of some summary points around this. It's, I'd hate to speak on behalf of the insurance folks who, you know, handle all of this piece because once it kind of crosses into their area, there's, I guess we have 10 to 13 different property insurance policies that get triggered different ways to different amounts.
Our insurance?
Well, our insurance, but that...
Or the roofing companies?
So our insurance is always involved because they're self-insured always, but then of course there's subrogation when there's the belief that others may have been negligent or things along those lines. So just because that's in their hands and I know they're So just because that's in their hands, and I know there could be legal issues involved, I just would hesitate to just talk about it at any length, but what we could do is we'll get with the insurance folks and just make them aware that you all would like more detailed information on that. It can be vetted by our legal team about what we should be putting together so you have a good comprehensive understanding to the best of what we can give you at this time. Is that sufficient?
What was, do we have a verdict on what happened?
Well, again, I would just say, you know, I would, I would prefer to have, to have a chance to, it's multiple folks, it's not just one group that can speak to it, I'd rather the insurance folks and our legal folks make sure that we're speaking from one page here.
How about?
Just responsible, and this wasn't a board agenda, so I just, that's why, you know, I wasn't prepared to, I just wanted to address your merit, when you ask a question, I want to try to answer it responsibly.
How about staff inside? Now, that's, the main part of the roof that collapsed was over the old part of the building that's office. Are the office personnel currently in that, or have they moved headquarters for now? And if they are, are they safe?
They, it is the office area. I could, I'll get with our maintenance staff and ask them to just give us a best update of everything that's already been done. I know the area's been repaired.
Are they working in that office? Is it habitable now for office, or is it?
I'll have to reach out to our staff. I mean, I just, again, it wasn't an item that we knew was to be asked about today, so I'll be happy to get them that information.
Right, well, it just came up as we were talking about roofs.
Dr. Savage, on point of order, okay, we're off the agenda again, and?
Oh, isn't this a time for general questions?
We have not reached that yet.
I'm sorry, all right, so that was, I thought we were into general questions.
No, we had not moved on yet from the last operations question.
Sorry, I believed that that's where we were.
Thank you very much, okay. So, Dr. Atkins, then that's it for now, and I'm sure we'll get an update in due time.
Well, we should know whether, somebody should be able to tell us if the office staff is in there and if they're safe.
And I think they'll find that out for us. I would just be cautious about moving, asking any further questions with regard to this because there's some legal issues that are out there. I'm not, I'm not versed yet with all of the facts and everything that's going on, so I would just urge caution so we don't make any type of admissions or anything that could jeopardize any potential legal matter in the future.
Thank you very much, Attorney Bruno. Okay, next on the agenda then is good of the order. I'll begin with Mrs. Giavanelle.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I would ask to be updated on that when that's possible. I'm not aware of what you just mentioned, so I would be, I would be very interested to know what you're talking about, so that is one thing. The couple of questions that I do have regarding health and safety, and this is for Dr. Atkins, I actually took a walk down the hallway to the end where the gorilla is, and it was a very strong, very, very strong smell. It smelled more like bug spray to me, but anyways, and I had heard that the teachers that I mentioned last week that were 80, I guess now they're 70, one of them was taken to the hospital or something? Can you update us on that? And?
If anyone was taken to the hospital or even left the building?
That's what I was told, so I was curious.
Oh.
Okay, because I, also I know that they were confronted outside as well by another employee, you know, so, I mean, this is just, I just want to make sure that our teachers are, you know, this is the health and safety and welfare of our teachers, it's important to know what's going on there because it's very strong down there. Anybody can take a walk down there, I did at lunchtime, so. And the irony of it, once you come past the door, you don't smell it on the other side. It was like in that other area, so it was very different. And I'm assuming it's from the fogging last night?
Right, correct.
So the whole, this whole building gets fogged on Wednesdays, that's what I wanted to ask you.
Understanding, yes.
Okay, so do we know what the cost of that will be?
Dr. Savage, I don't know if you know the individual cost of this building, but?
I can say that the teachers are not down in where you're talking about, they're in a different area. And as soon as we got word, Dr. Spire and I went down and walked to that area, and there was no, the smell was not there. So I'm not, so the area you're talking about is not where the, those 70 teachers' cubicles are.
Right, okay, and where is that? Where are they at?
They're in the, it's considered academic services and it's in the red hall.
Okay, okay, thank you. So then the other question I had was regarding, I have had, received numerous calls regarding spectator viewing for sports. So can you tell us what's going on there, please?
Yes, I can. In fact, thank you for the question because I have it right here.
Thank you.
This is opportune time. So athletics. So again, they did consult with the Florida Department of Health in Lee County, and here's the plan. So for volleyball, we're going to give, provide two tickets per player for both the home and the visiting team. Masks and social distancing will be required of fans, so that's volleyball. For football, we will set the number of tickets based on 25% of stadium capacity. We will give two tickets per player for home and away games. We will have cheerleaders and a pep band at the home game only, and they will receive two tickets. Any leftover tickets will be sold online, first come, first served. Masks and social distancing will be required in the stands. Some good news is the schools, high schools have agreed to profit share this year, that is new. They've agreed to profit share this year since some venues are larger than others. Cheerleading will be capped at 50. I think some of you are aware that, you know, we have, kind of goes back to our earlier conversation about cheerleading, but we do have some of our schools that pretty much go unlimited on cheerleaders, but that's going to have to be capped at 50. Spaced out along the track with no mixing of squads, no stunts. Pep bands will also be capped at 50 and will be socially distanced in the end zone. They will stand and play at halftime, and it will be a school-based decision about allowing students to leave at halftime, these are the pep bands. So if a pep band is larger than 50, it's the recommendation that we let the seniors play at all the events and rotate junior classmen through, okay, so if you have a large band. Fortunately, we don't have bands like Collier, which I know that Dr. Patton is working with 400 in some of the bands, and so that's one of their big challenges down there. For bowling, golf, and cross-country, we'll have to abide by the rules for each venue because it, you know, it does depend on the venue, as you know. And for swimming, we can't allow fans inside the facility, however, they will be able to watch from outside the fence area. Concessions at any event, serving concessions will be grab-and-go only. So that's, that's our update. And again, that was one that we did work with our partners to, to come up with. Ms. Gittens?
I had heard somewhere that they were considering digitally showing the games or whatever, has that gone any further?
I know that they were continuing to work on that, so I don't have the latest, so Dr. Spiro does, apparently.
Thank you, good afternoon. Yes, they are, we are looking at showing those, streaming them, and we're looking at a couple agencies that are possibly going to be able to offer that service. And that way, if you do have some folks who cannot get into the stadium to see the games or inside any of the areas, they still would have an opportunity to do so. We're just, we're finalizing with Ms. LaRosa, and Dr. Desmore and her team are finalizing which service that we're going to be using.
I know that there is a gentleman that, or maybe more than one, especially in the East Zone, that has been doing that for some time, so probably appreciate reaching out to him. He did it, he was doing it anyway.
Thank you. A pleasure.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So the profit sharing is phenomenal, thank you. Thank you, thank you to the principals, and just thank you, that's really phenomenal. Will we stop play if spectators are failing to follow safety measures in place?
Yeah, I'm sure we will, yeah.
If we could just get, provide me with some assurance of that, I would appreciate it because, you know, the officials will have to be in on that, willing to blow the whistle and simply stop play until people comply, that would be great.
And I think Attorney DePree Bruno can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the reasons why she was stressing that we make sure we put a policy in place and then continue rulemaking policy is to put some teeth in the mandate that we had already moved forward with, so.
Yep, I 100% agree with that. I just want to make sure our officials are on board. I mean, you know, if you go to a game and you have a noise maker that's not allowed, the officials will stop the game until the person is identified and removed or whatever. It's just, it's the same thing, it's just for a different.
And I do want to just take a moment and acknowledge our team, Mr. Simmons and Dr. Spiro and our high school principals. This was a very difficult decision, very passionate arguments were made, but I think they came to the right conclusion and they are, so I appreciate you recognizing that work. It was not easy, but they came to a good decision.
Thank you. Ms. Giavanelle, you want to continue?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So no, thank you for that because I think it's really important for everybody to understand that, and so I, I think you've got a good plan there. That's why I was, I was hoping for, I'm like being able to give the tickets out and, and so if they don't, let's say parents don't take the opportunity to take those two tickets, that just opens it up for, on the online, for additional tickets there as well, right? And you're going to just, a certain amount, it's going to be limited to what the capacity is, half the capacity, right?
Yes, that's correct, in the case of at least football.
Yeah.
And I don't know about volleyball, but I know with football, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. So then I had one other concern. Teachers are told that they're not going to be notified if someone in their class or even campus has tested positive, but that's not true, is it? Like I can't, like I can't imagine not being notified if there was a positive case at a school.
Now, this is, this is a difficult one. First of all, we do identify the school, okay? So anytime we have a positive case at the school, we send notice to all of our, all of our folks at the school, including our parents and all of our staff. Where it gets to be very difficult is if we have a case that happens in a particular classroom, we have, the Department of Health is, is very, that's where we have to be very careful with that type of a notification because of FERPA and HIPAA and all of that. So I think what you're going to see there is, you know, in the case where we do have a student, I think, I think it's just probably a matter of time before people figure that out, but, but no, you're not going to get an individual notice if you have necessarily, unless you have been impacted through contact tracing that, that you may have been exposed. So they do the contact tracing, so if you have a student that was in close proximity or a teacher that was in close proximity, they would be notified under, and they would be notified by the Department of Health. I know that, that Ms. Stillwell and Irma Lancaster are working with our Department of Health to produce a, a report for our parents and community in terms of, we're going to be transparent about when we have positive cases at a school, you know, and our community will know, we're not going to hide that. I know that Mr. DePree Bruno has been involved, as has our legal team, so that we're not violating any protective, you know, requirements that we have to do in terms of, you know, protective health information, but yet still trying to be as transparent as we possibly can with our community.
That's, I think that's really important. I mean, the universities are doing it, so I think that we can do it as a whole, you know, like X amount and today, you know, whatever, so ever, however you want to inform the community, but I think it, it's awareness and that's all that, you know, we all got to be vigilant, so thank you. That's all I have, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica, nothing? Okay, Ms. Jordan?
No, I'm just, the only thing I would like to say is I'm really appreciative of the spectators, that's, that is really a great thing. And I know a lot of the other districts are doing that with the two tickets, so that's going to make a lot of people happy, so thank you for all that work.
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
I think I have nothing right now. I know, she looks at me over her, look, she goes like, what? I hope we got that on camera, okay?
I didn't, but I should. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I had a couple general questions, so I can ask them right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. I was curious about bus ridership. You know, we were hoping that we would be at like half-capacity or whatever, do we have some, you know, I don't need exact, but ballpark figures on?
Yes, I do.
Kids that are actually riding the buses?
I do. We have a very low number of students that are riding buses. What is typical is like five or six students per bus. We have up to 12 to 14. There was one report that Mr. Lloyd made me aware of yesterday of a bus that had 22 students, I believe, maybe 23, but that's the highest number that I've heard thus far. We do have some routes that have had zero riders, and we do have, and some routes that have had one, so they are going to be working to consolidate those routes. So right now, bus ridership is extremely low. On the other hand, parent drop-off is extremely high.
Sure.
So.
So those lines are, yeah, I've done that a time or two, like, please don't give me this. All right, so now the harder, the harder question. So I'm seeing, like in the South Zone, everybody was delivered by, let's say, 6 o'clock, I think was the. What's taking so long? Because I know middle school gets out at 4:00.
Right.
And our ridership is, is way down. Is it the procedures of dismissal that are slowing things down? That, it's a really late hour, two hours after middle school ends that they're getting, some kids are getting to their bus stops at 6:00.
Right, yeah, it is predominantly an issue that has to do with loading, particularly at the elementary school.
Oh, at the elementary?
Yes, because what, if you think about what happened, and then, then it gets compounded because then her second is the middle school. So it starts with, you know, normally they would be getting off that ramp, let's say, 15 minutes, but instead, some of the buses are taking much longer to make sure that every student that needs to be riding a bus is on the correct bus.
Okay.
And so, and if you think about kindergarteners, if you think about students that are language-challenged this first week of school, you're going to see a lot of those issues cropping up, and it delays our buses as a result.
Okay, I was wondering if it was something like that, or if it was, because I know we talked about that the schools are just, they're not just saying bye kids, and like a thousand kids are out the door, it's?
That's taking longer as well, but it's usually how I just described. Weather also impacts dismissal, so if we have a weather event, thunder, lightning, we have to hold the buses during this time of year, that's an issue as well.
Can I just add to that as well? A lot of the students that are dropped off in the morning take the bus in the afternoon, so those children are not familiar right away with getting on the bus and all that, but they, because they've been dropped off, so it increases it.
I doubt you're going to have anything to say.
Okay, and I want to say as, as well, it's, it's good news that there is the sharing of the profits. You know, we've talked on this day several times, and I know I'm one of the people that says you have the haves and the have-nots through, through no, anything bad that others, that's, other schools have done. It's the, you know, if you have an iconic school, you, that's been around for a number of years, you have a huge buildup of alumni versus a school that hasn't been around as much or that serves a lower socioeconomic community where the people can't afford to contribute as much. And so, thank you to all the principals who? And so, thank you to all the principals who, you said it was a big discussion, so it was unselfishly, or like, okay, I can live with it. Thank you, principals, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to take one minute to say that I'm very happy that on Tuesday, our school health plan for 2020, 2020, 2022 will be approved, and I know the hard work that went into that, and I want to thank all of the members of the Shack Committee and Ms. Swift for the work on that, and that for the 26th year in a row, our Learning for Life grant is, the application is in, and we have been receiving career and character education training through that program at no cost to the district, so that's good. Wanted to mention that I'm excited for Dr. Santini, that he is going to be leaving us after 56 years in the district, but he did promise me he'd wait for me, and he reneged on that. I just wanted to put that on record. And I'm looking forward to the recognition and the celebration as he leaves us to go on to the next phase in his life. Also, I've noticed since school began that the traffic has really increased, so that may be contributing to the late arrival of some kids, once they do get on the bus. Let me see, and I had a call saying that the buses were riding around with the windows closed. However, I saw four buses yesterday, and the windows were all open, so that was good news. And we are all in this together. I want to thank the people at the schools who have been working incredibly hard, and all of our departments for all of the work that they have done, and we continue to move on, stay well. And at this point, Ms. Bruno, do you have anything for the Good of the Order?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Atkins?
Just very briefly, I just wanted to talk about the COVID Task Force. They have been, you know, manning the phones this week and doing a great job. The, the phone call and email questions started out with a lot of technology questions and, and student assignment and transportation, those type of things, but now they're a little bit more focused on, on COVID. They are being manned from 7:00 to 7:00. However, we're going to probably be looking at, you know, decreasing that, because call volume drops way off later in the afternoon, so I think we're going, our plan is to continue tonight, and then we'll probably close a little early Friday, and then Beth and her team will, will monitor over the weekend, but instead of having a whole team, we'll just have two that will be on that hotline, and I think that will be able to respond to the, to the need. Where we really do have a concern is making sure that Sunday, you know, as people are starting to make the plans to make Monday, that we do have staff available, so we'll be able to do that. But they've done a great job. I do have to say that our teachers and our school administrators, our bus operators and support staff, you all know this, but again, for anybody who's watching this, I've been very, very pleased with what we've seen. We have had positive cases in our district, as you know, and, but what we have seen is that our safety protocols have reduced the number of students that have had to be quarantined to a very, very small amount. Hopefully, that trend will continue, you know, and, but I just think that's a hats off to, to the staff, so that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I know you're looking at me over your thing, but I do have one question. He triggered it, it wasn't my fault.
It's my fault.
No, the question that I've gotten from a few people is, in the big scheme of things with our protocols with COVID, I know you've talked about that 5%, if we're below a certain percentage over a certain amount of time, and is there something from CDC or from us that talks about at what point, at that point, would we not have to wear masks or something of that sort? And I've gotten that a lot, so if you could address it, it'd be great.
Well, I'll ask Beth to come up and, and help me with that one. That's one of those things where we will be evaluating as we, you know, evaluating with our local Department of Health to make that final determination when it's time to decrease some of these safety protocols. Obviously, we're going to be looking at the spread positivity rate, but other factors as well.
That's correct. And right now, the guidance that we're receiving, and there's nothing on the CDC that states at this point, at this time, then we would reduce those, so that'll be something that we continue to monitor. We'll look at trends in the data and receive that information from our local, as well as our state and federal regulators for that. So at this time, we don't have those numbers. This is all brand-new to all of us, and as it evolves, then hopefully we will have more answers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Givinelli?
So back, I started thinking, so about spectators, I know kids kind of can congregate outside that fence from the, so how are we going to monitor that and making sure that we're, I mean, and are we going to make masks outs, being outside, are we going to make the parents wear masks at the, in the stadium?
Yes, yes, yes. It's, it's a district event, and so we're following the district regulations and rules.
Thank you, that's, I wanted to be real clear on that, because I, I think people think outside, and they think that's not...
Sure. We will also have social distancing markers and arrows as well, just like we do in our schools. We'll have those for the events.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I had, I just wanted to...
Thank you.
I could just see all the kids hanging outside, watching the game and thinking, "Oh, we don't have to pay," but, you know what I mean? I think that's going to be a little bit of a somewhat, some ja, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Beth. Okay, at this point, seeing no other business to come before this board and hearing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Stay well.